All right, good evening, everybody. Welcome to City Council Meeting. We're gonna start out tonight with an invocation from Grace Baptist Church. If you can come on down. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Let's pray together. Father, we thank you tonight for your goodness and your care for us. We thank you for our city and all that you empower us and enable us to do, the strength you give us each day. But we're very mindful of our need of you. Father, we think about our first responders, our police officers, our firefighters, all those that have a part in keeping our cities safe. Lord, we pray that you would be with them tonight, give them peace. May there be peace in our neighborhoods. But we're grateful and thankful for all the teachers. We pray that you'd help them as they educate our students, give them, Lord, the care that they need to do the job that you've given them. Oh, we thank you for the business of our city. Lord, help us tonight and every person that has a part in this meeting. I pray that you would give accountability and responsibility and, Lord, the dedication and all that, that we would observe those things and be true to them, be with the men and women that will make decisions. Lord, give them wisdom and discernment as they make decisions for all of us. And, Lord, we just thank you for this gathering of people. We pray that you'd sow yourself strong. Maybe we see something maybe in the next week to realize how good you are. Thank you for this time. Bless it, we pray, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Stay right there. Stay right there. Will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I've thought about you doing that tonight. Thank you, Mayor. Let's pledge allegiance together. Ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, sir.
Okay, let's start off with the fun stuff. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order. We've had a pledge, a prayer, and now individuals wishing to address the City Council are requested to complete a blue card. They're in the back, and they're up here. You can rob them from your neighbor if you should so wish. And fill out the blue card. Please observe a three-minute limit for communications. And once called upon to speak, speak. Please state your name, city, and residence for the record. All right, up next is Proclamations, Recognizations, and Presentations. And we would like to start off with the Citizens Academy winner, 2024 Cohort Graduates. So if you guys are here, I think I'm reading names. I lost my help. Okay. So Michael Ryan, if you're here. Little clap for Mike. Bobby Ronnie. Sorry if I said that wrong. James Ranslow. Susanna Quintero Soto.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, we saw you. Yeah, don't you go. Chief has an eye on you. Leah Perez. Deborah Pierce. Carmen Luera. Elaine Minor. Did I get that right? Kelly Montalvo. Eddie Montalvo. Oh, husband-wife duo. I'm not sure Eddie wanted to come. Reza Alfredo. Okay. Paul Saleeb. John Strasser. Margaret Strasser. Oh, John, your wife made you come too. I'm glad you made him come. Danielle Hollis. Sue Anne Hathaway. Sally Garland. Chris Dellenbach. Man, the first half, we're all like, I'm present. It's like the Slackards. Teresa Buchanan. Frank Swain. What a cool name, by the way. Sandra Young. And you didn't bring the husband? He's literally the fire chief. Oh, I'm sorry. That's, well, I've been corrected. But I think I made you look good. Lucius Jackson III. Hugo. I'm not saying your last name, Hugo. Scott Metcalf. I have nowhere to stand. So I don't know how much you guys know about the Citizens Academy. These people all know everything Corona now. They'll be sitting up there shortly. But I got to spend the last day with you guys, right? And they did a quiz, and I thought, I'll smoke them all. And I lost. So you thoroughly embarrassed me. And as a council, city manager, city lawyer, and all these people, we are very happy that you did the Citizens Academy. And does someone want to? Mike, do you want to speak on behalf of the cap? Actually, yeah, go ahead.
I could, I could. It's, for those that don't know anything about it, it's eight weeks, plus tonight, nine weeks, actually. And it's behind the scenes. And we get to talk to the folks that actually run the city and the department heads, and we ask a lot of questions. And I gotta tell you, the only questions that didn't get answered were the questions that weren't asked. It's real simple. No matter what you think you know of the city or what you want to know of the city, join the class and check it out. It's well worth it. It's well worth your time. And we've got a great group of people that run this organization and proud to be a citizen, so.
You're good. So please, sign up for the Nick. Did you want to speak? Yeah, okay. Well, check's in the mail. The, please, 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 if you've never gone through the Citizens Academy, I highly, highly recommend it. It's a chance for you as a citizen to learn your city, and it's a very well-organized program. Can we take a picture? Okay, as great as the Citizens Academy is, it turns out, everybody in this room is here for one person tonight, so I've been told by Mary. And that person is Mary. So Mary, will you please come up? Actually, it was Jackie.
I was gonna say Tom. I mean, her name is Mary, but you can say the rest of her name and what she does. But that's okay, too. I mean, we all know Mary, of course, but.
All right, let me give you an introduction to Mary. Her full name is Mary Helen Ibar. She's a school president, trustee, school trustee. She has been the president a few times, but this year, she's slacking a little bit. And in her slacking a little bit, she won statewide the Trustee of, the School Trustee of the Year. So out of all the trustees. And if you know Mary, she has a magazine. This is the Centerfold. And she autographed it to me, Mayor Tom Richens, and this will go in the mayor's office. On a personal note, if you ever, ever get a chance to get to know Mary, you will know that she has a heart of gold. She serves with all heart, and she serves out of love. And if you ever become friends with her on Facebook, you cannot keep up with her Facebook. She's everywhere, somewhere, every day, with the school board or a school or putting the superintendent in line. And she's an all-star. So with that, Mary, will you say a few words? Read a few words.
Thank you, Mayor Richens and City Council, for this wonderful recognition. I am honored tonight. I've been a resident of Corona for 41 years and have always poured my heart and soul in helping my community, from chairing blood drives for children with cancer to working food drives during COVID. I serve as the Vice President of the Corona Safety Foundation, Corona Safety Fire Foundation. I'm Mrs. Santa Claus. You see me around a lot for kids and cops. I'm also Mrs. Claus for the Riverside Head Start. I've done PTA, past Corona Public Library trustee, and much more. All this said, I just want to say that I'm very proud to be a school board member for Corona Norco Unified. The best district in the United States, not just California. We have our superintendent here, and I'm very proud to be. It's a lot of work. It's, I hate to say a thankless job because we get beat up a lot, but I love it. I love, not getting beat up, but I love being a board member. It's all about our kids. And thank you again to my family and friends who are here today, and thank you for supporting me always.
Thank you, Mary. Mary, don't leave, don't leave. So we have prepared this proclamation for you. You can take it to all the schools and show the students. It's for being the 2023 California State Board Assembly Member of the Year. I'm sorry I didn't say that right. But it's all you, and we're all happy. And behalf of everybody there, you know they're rooting for you, too. So you take that, and then. Drop that. I'm gonna hold this. All right. Ms. Edwards, are there any speaker cards on the proclamations?
Mayor, we do not have any speaker cards.
Okay. Oh, I forgot to mention that not only is Mary Mrs. Claus, but Santa Claus is in the audience tonight, too. So if you know who he is, don't tell anyone. All right, meeting minutes. Ms. Edwards, are there any speaker cards from the public for meeting minutes?
Mayor, we do not have any speaker cards for the meeting minutes.
Does anyone want to make a motion?
I'll move to approve the minute, the minute meetings.
All right, 5:00. Consent calendar. All items listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine matters, status reports, or documents covering previous city council action. The items listed on the consent calendar may be enacted in one motion with the concurrence of the city council. A council member or any person in attendance may request that an item be removed for further consideration. Would any of my colleagues like to pull multiple items? Done. Ms. Casillas?
No, thank you.
Not a.
Wow. That went fast. Sylvia, anyone?
Mayor, do not have any speaker cards for the consent calendar.
This is a first. This isn't a first. All right, do we have a motion?
I think everyone's like sticking to the button, and they refuse to say it.
Oh, did?
We're doing a response.
I'm sorry, but did? Under DeDario rules, has everybody pushed buttons?
Yes, Mayor, I do have a first and a second.
Okay. Can we vote? All right, 5:00. Okay, here we go. Communications from the public. This portion of the agenda is intended for general public comment on items within the council's jurisdiction that are not listed elsewhere on the agenda. Please note that state law prohibits the city council from discussing or taking action on these items. Please observe a three-minute limit for comments. And once called upon to speak, please state your name and city of residence for the record. Ms. Edwards, are there any speaker cards?
Mayor, yes, I have three speaker cards for communication from the public.
Okay. If you're one of the three, come on up.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, and gentlelady, of course, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Hassan Basir. I'm a resident of Corona. I meet Mary by a couple of years. I've been here about 43 years, so been a longtime resident here. Today, I'm here on behalf of the Islamic Society of Corona Norco to invite everybody to our annual Interfaith Iftar Dinner. I know I had distributed cards for the council members and all the staff, department heads, but I'm old school. So I wanted to come here and invite everybody in person. Especially, I responded to Jackie's email. But Jackie, I mean, we have a lot of doctors and nurses on staff there, so we can handle any emergency. So really, I hope that everybody can attend, and we are all looking forward to this. And this year, we're going to do indoors because it's going to be very cold that evening. So hopefully, we'll all have a good time. So with that, you know, if anybody else from here has not received the invitation, it is an open invitation. You can see that this is the Sunday from 6 o'clock all the way till 10. We'll try to wrap it up by 9:00. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. Frank Swain, I work and live in a city, last 20 years or so. A lot of my neighbors, constituents, been coming and asking me questions. City has a lot of money to give. I'm like, wow. I said, what is it? They said $100 million going into a park on Sixth Street. And I'm like, wow, really? I'll be under two minutes. And they said $100 million is gonna be a borrowed money. And the interest on that money, I don't know if it's true or not, seven to eight million a year for 10 or 20 years. It's the money we're gonna borrow. And there's no income or return on that money if they are, they are, they are saying it's right. So I don't know if you want to spend all that money in one spot or you want to distribute that money to other council members' areas here that they need. If I'm in charge, I'll probably give it to Jim Steiner, have him build another beautiful Sierra del Oro. He's paving all the streets now, and we all like what he's doing. Just an idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Steiner's happy about that.
Good evening. Bobby Spiegel with the Corona Chamber of Commerce, 904 East Sixth Street. I was hoping that Ashley Zaragoza would be here tonight. She's with your economic development team. Last week, she spoke as the main speaker at the industry breakfast at Norco College, and I just wanted you to know, she did an amazing job, great delivery, great connectivity, and it's such a wonderful thing to see the partnership between Norco College and different people within Corona, as well, the Corona Police Department was recognized as well. And it was just an awesome day there. Also, I just wanted to, while I've still got a couple of minutes left, I just wanted to acknowledge Ms. Jackie Casillas. Yesterday, you attended a meeting at the chamber. We appreciate you doing that. And then you're here tonight, and for those that aren't aware, she is long overdue, I believe, by three days. But we love your spirit. We love what you do and what you represent, so thank you. Thank you so much for being here. And then tomorrow morning, we have our breakfast meeting. Once a month, we have different keynote speakers at our breakfast membership meeting at Eagle Glen. Sheriff Chad Bianco is our keynote speaker tomorrow. We still have a few seats left, but you have to get up there by 6:30 in the morning to make sure that you're one of the lucky ones that still get to have a seat. And then next month, to plan ahead, the district attorney, Mike Heston, will be our speaker on Thursday, April 18th. It was a misprint in our publication. It says the 19th, but it does say Thursday, so I just wanted to clarify that. So thank you so much, and we'll be back up later on on other items that are on the agenda. Thank you.
We do not have any more speaker cards, Mayor.
Joe tricked me. Public hearings, number 22. Zone text amendment 2024 to Title 17 of the Corona Municipal Code to add Chapter 17 for low barrier navigation center and amendments to Chapter 17.87 to update regulations applied to density bonus agreements and to Chapters 17.91 and 17.1 to update outdated language and criteria for precise plan and architectural review applications. Does any council member want a staff report on this item? Wes? Jackie? Jim? All right. No, no reports. The public hearing is now open. Sylvia, are there any speaker cards?
Mayor, we did not receive speaker cards for this item.
Do I have any questions or comments from my colleagues? No. Do you guys want to push buttons? Push away.
Mayor, can you close the public hearing?
Oh, public hearing is now closed. Will you let me know when the buttons have been pushed? Open rebellion up here.
I have a first from council member speak and a second from Vice Mayor Steiner.
Okay, let's vote. Sylvia, was the motion supposed to be read?
Yes, I was just about to come back to that. The motion does need to be read.
I was waiting for someone to miss that, but apparently our crowd.
Do you know who made the motion?
Yeah, Wes did.
Oh, good luck, Wes.
Yeah, that's what happens. Introduced by title only in way full reading and consideration of ordinance number 3391. First reading of ordinance amending Chapter 17.87, density bonus agreements and development agreements, section 1791.0770, findings for approval of Chapter 17.91, precise plans, and Chapter 17.100 of Architectural Review Board of Title 17 of the Corona Municipal Code and adding Chapter 17.67, low barrier navigation center to the Corona Municipal Code, ZTA 24, 2024 0001.
Sylvia, do we need to vote again?
No, we don't. I have the votes for the record.
Okay, thank you. All right, number 23. I'm assuming some of you are here for this item. Zone text amendment 2024-002 to Title 17 of the Corona Municipal Code to amend the signed ordinance in Chapter 17.74 to prohibit temporary signs in the public rights of way, applicant city of Corona. Does any council member want a staff report on this item? Yeah, I believe the answer is yes. So Ms. Coletta, Planning and Development Director, will you present the item?
Yes, I will, and thank you. And thank you for reading the title, so I will not reintroduce it here. This will be a very quick presentation because the council has heard it once before. We currently have temporary sign regulations within our Corona Municipal Code, and that's within our signed ordinance. Temporary signs are allowed within our public rights of way, starting at 7:00 a.m. on Saturday, ending at 7:00 p.m. on Sunday. This is just a reminder to you, when it comes to establishing general regulations for assigned ordinance, first and foremost, we do have to adhere to the rights under the First Amendment. Therefore, we do not regulate signs based on the content of their message. The only thing we regulate signs on is when it comes to time, place, and manner restrictions, and that's currently what we do within our existing ordinance. Just a reminder on the background, this was discussed at our Fall Policy Workshop in October of 2023. This came to light because we did receive some concern from city residents regarding the number of temporary signs along our city streets on the weekend, also having a repeated number of signs by the same person in the same general area. And really, when it came to the real estate signs, there was really a minimal number of open houses when compared to the number of signs that were being posted on the weekend. So that's what really started the conversation. When we came before the city council at the Fall Policy Workshop, we talked about our proposed, or actually, our existing signage regulations and possibly proposed amendments. However, the majority at that time just directed staff to go ahead and look for, propose a ban on actually removing the requirement. Just a reminder to you, we do allow signs up to three per entity on a single block during the weekend, and they are limited to a size of two by three, no higher than three feet. And these signs do need to be secured to a post or a pole that's in the ground, so we do want them fastened. And right now, if we have signs that are staying beyond Sunday, we do have our own code enforcement personnel, as well as a volunteer that helps us do cleanup in the days following Sunday. So the proposed recommendation that you have before you and what went to the Planning and Housing Commission would be to basically prohibit the regulations that we have in place today. We would delete all of those and just do an outright prohibition. So really, the conversation for the council tonight is either to approve the ZTA and to have discussion on that, and I am here to answer any questions.
All right. You guys want to do public hearing? Okay, the public hearing is now open. Ms. Edwards, has the city clerk's office received correspondence or speaker cards from the public regarding this item?
Mayor, yes, we received three letters. Two letters were in opposition of the proposed item, one letter was in support. The council has those letters, and they will also be filed with the meeting minutes to be part of the record, and we have 15 speaker cards for this item.
Thanks, Sylvia. So if you pulled a speaker card, if you could start lining up over here, and we'll just take it as first come, first served. Welcome.
Good evening, everybody, council. Thank you, guys, for all you do, especially you tonight, Jackie. My name is Dr. Anthony Peritano. I'm with Integrated Medical Center and current chairman of the board for the Corona Chamber of Commerce. Thank you, first of all, to those of you who've been open to communicating with the chamber over the last couple of weeks regarding this issue. Being part of the city of Corona for my whole life, I'm close to people on both sides of the discussion. And the hard part about this is both sides of the discussion have very valid points. Also, both sides of that discussion are part of the reason for the problem. I understand it's a multifaceted issue, and the chamber is not here to simply say, do right by business, end of story. That's not what we're here for. I do understand the city has interacted with the subsets of businesses we're talking about, trying to solve this issue for over a year. Our position is that there is, this is more of an enforcement issue than anything else. I understand that the enforcement of this topic could be difficult at best. However, there is a current ordinance, and that ordinance is not enforced with a penalty that will change behavior, then it's effectively a waste of time. Good actors tend to follow the law in various ordinances, but unfortunately, people at times can go to the lowest common denominator. If there's no speed limit and no restriction, people will speed. It's as simple as that. Some people follow the law because that's their moral compass. But unfortunately or fortunately, people follow the speed limit because there's significant implications for not doing so. I'm suggesting a compromise where you limit the amount of signs per business to whatever five, whatever that number is, and I would also hope the ordinance is backed by stiff and significant fines per sign that violate the ordinance, whether it's a number of signs or if they're not removed in time. Penalize them. I know you have limited resources with the city as far as enforcement goes, but if they're hit with a $250 per sign, they're going to learn quick. This could also be an opportunity for those in the community to give traction to the See, Click, Fix application the city uses to help assist with enforcement. Whether or not it's effective at helping enforcement, I cannot answer, but I do understand they can use this tool. It could be done as a trial till the end of the year, and if it doesn't work, then both sides, we're enforcing it, business is not self-regulating, then go to a complete ban. So in short, whenever you take, we got people on both extremes of a situation, and just to do an outright ban, you're going to punish the good people for the actions of bad actors. So thank you for your time, and appreciate, take care.
My name is Paul Herrera. I'm the government affairs director with the Inland Gateway Association Realtors. Thank you for this opportunity to speak, Mayor Richens, members of city council. First, I can second everything that was expressed by the chamber's chairman. We agree with every word there, and we're disappointed that we're here this evening battling a full ban when there's been a number of opportunities that we've engaged in to try to find regulation and try to find enforcement for the regulation to really impact this issue. Going back, I believe, now well over a year, both in individual meetings and written correspondence, we have sought ways to address this issue, but unfortunately, we're here looking at only this option, following the action from the city session back in the fall. To be clear, the use of the signs to have generated complaints from Corona residents, and frankly, some of our own members, is really reflected on things that are currently and have been illegal. And the fact that those penalties weren't visited on the violators is why the action just kept going on. Passing a ban doesn't make what's been going on any more illegal than it already has been. If the action to enforce it doesn't follow it, we'll be here in the same circumstance, just with a different piece of paper, addressing the same issue. So we're asking you respectfully that you would reject a ban on these signs, which would impact open house signs, which have been respectfully and responsibly used by Realtors for generations, and allow us to come back to work on regulation in a way that'll be effective and that we can assist the city in implementing. Thank you very much for your time.
Good evening, council. My name is Justin McBride. I'm a resident of Corona since 2009. I'm a real estate agent, member of Tigar, and I am in full opposition of having a ban. I want a ban. I have operated a corporate business as well in this city. I still operate one. I follow all the rules. I have a business license. I follow it. My real estate license also has a business license in this city. This goes not just with the signs, it goes with the behavior of the agents that I am peers with. There are many agents, if you look, that operate in this city. I hear numbers at Keller Williams of 800 agents. I don't know how true that is, but I hear rumors of 2,000-plus agents in Corona. But when I go look at the business licenses for Corona real estate agents, I see numbers in the low hundreds. So we're already seeing bad behavior by bad actors at all levels here. So what I'm asking for is a full ban because when my guests come from other counties, other cities, the first thing they go is, ha, 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 you got spam, ha, 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 pop-ups. We've become a joke. We are a freeway billboard as you come up Upper End Lincoln and Foothill every day. I saw on the item there from the community development there, 7:00 a.m. Saturday, I dare you to go out at Upper End Lincoln, go all the way up to the firehouse in Maine at 6:00 Friday night. There'll be 10 signs. They're there every night. They have been for years. My former neighbor was a volunteer code enforcement officer, and I agree, there is no teeth in what we've done here in this city. He would pull the signs on a Monday morning, sometimes at his own risk, with cars almost hitting him because of where they were placed. And he would bring them in, and he was told, ha, ha, okay, we'll call them, they'll come pick them up. There was no teeth in it. Huntington Beach has a sign ban, not a full sign ban. They say three signs per open house. That's it. Every sign over, it's $250. You can find it in Orange County Register a couple of years ago. One agent took $2,200 in fines. Okay? This is something that is an ongoing behavior. We see agents putting up open house signs that don't go to a valid open house. I've seen people almost be hit because of people getting lost trying to follow open house signs, and it is a public safety issue as well. Beyond that, this is a modern world. We're a digital world. Open house signs are outdated. People do not come to Corona looking for a house by an open house sign. They come here because they went to Zillow, Realtor, you know, one of the different tools online, and that's where they found the house. That's why they came to Corona. So what I ask is, the council, consider a full ban of all signs. They are a blight and an eyesore to the city, and it's time to make a change. Thank you. I also have a letter here for the clerk.
Good evening, Mayor Richens, council members, and I suppose baby on board. My name is Jeannie Hallgrenson, and I am the Inland Gateway Association Local Government Affairs Chair this year, and I appreciate you giving me this time to speak. I am also, I have my business license here, so just so you know, I am one of the few hundred. But specifically, we are asking the city council to turn down this proposed ban and return to discussion on how to tailor an appropriate ordinance that would significantly reduce clusters of general advertising signs without generally outlawing the privilege. There are such proposals on the table last fall, which were discarded, and you went for this total ban. Now, I'd like to say that Realtors are the very first people that, when people come looking for homes in Corona, usually we will be the ones that see them first. We tell them about this community, we champion Corona, and we don't feel it is fair that the people that obey the laws, like I do, are punished because there's others that don't. My number one biggest thing I dislike is when they say, hey, I'll ask for forgiveness, but, you know, I'd rather just do it, not ask for permission. I'm saying if you do put teeth in your ordinance, in the ordinance, and let's say there is a fine, like the first gentleman said, of quite a bit of money, then I think they will start taking notice. I think you should think about banning or taking away their license to do business in the city of Corona if they're repeat offenders. And I just ask that you vote no on this. You go back to think about how there's a way to make everybody happy and also help this blight you have with signs. Appreciate the time. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, city council members, legal and staff. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is, excuse me, my name is Dave Clark, and I'm a 22-year resident of Corona and have been practicing real estate in Corona for close to 33 years. I am currently the broker of record for Keller Williams in Corona, and I also have a sales team that leases retail space in the Albertson Shopping Center at Foothill in Maine. I'm one of the first agents that started putting out open house signs on weekends back when all of the homes in South Corona were being built. I pulled out my calculator, and I've come up with, and I've come up with a figure of signs that I've taken, put up and taken down of roughly 50,000 over the years. I and my team have helped sell over 1,500 homes with signs during that time. I'm not saying this to brag, just as to state a fact, and that during that time, I've never left a sign up intentionally after the posted hours or the days allotted to code. And I've only, for the record, posted open house signs. And I've only, for the record, posted open house signs only. Now to the point I'd like to make. If you ever bought a home from me, you had to listen to my story about how much I love this city and how great the schools are, the parks, the churches, the retail, the restaurants, the businesses in general, and how well our city is run. You get to hear about how low our crime rate is, how wonderful our police and fire departments are, and how great the neighborhoods are. Then there's our history, and what a history we have. I could go on. So what does this have to do with our topic tonight? To most, maybe not much. It's just an eyesore to them. And maybe shrugging your shoulders and pushing your button tonight, you can make it go away. Or you can choose to work with your goodwill ambassadors, us as realtors, to improve it. I agree that since COVID, it's worse than it's ever been. I got 27 seconds. And I admit, I've never seen so many area experts in one city in one weekend. And we need to do something, but a total ban is not how we feel we deserve to be treated after all we do to promote this city. We have proposed an alternative plan to the one currently in place, and we would like to have your support for this or a modification if necessary. And I encourage a partnership with us. We ask for the right to continue to advertise our businesses in a way that can be a win-win. You have our support as the Local Realtors Association, the office--
My name is Donna Bell, and my office is, I'm a Realtor, and my office is located here in the city of Corona. I am asking at this time if you would please reconsider the full ban on signs. I do want to say that signs do work. Yes, some people have abused it, but there are a good number of us who have not. And I know we live in a digital age. However, we do have clients and potential buyers who don't always use social media and all the other ones that have already been described. I do wish that you guys will reconsider and come back to the table on this. I oppose the full ban. Thank you.
My name is Rob Arietta, RE/MAX Rob on the job. I have been on the job in Corona since 1984. Okay, that's many years we've been doing business here. I've done countless open houses in the city and always have had the opportunity to have open house signs. So I do speak in opposition of the complete ban. And again, as Paul Herrera, our GAD, has eloquently put, we would love to work with the city for a resolution to fix the blight. There is a horrible blight. I agree, everybody in here agrees. We are asking for the ability to work with the city. So bottom line is, the city has an ordinance that is unacceptable. Three signs per block? That's crazy. It should have never been that. But the city, in my opinion, from working with my colleagues and knowing what's going on, they haven't been fined in years. Okay, what is that? Lack of enforcement. Okay? So anyway, I'm just asking, pleading with you, let's work together and figure something out that would work for all the residents of Corona, including the realtors, and let's get something that we can all work with. And I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, City Council Members. My name is John Valdez. I'm a resident of Corona and have been a Realtor for over 22 years. I'm speaking against the proposed sign ban. Yes, we do have a problem with the signs that are being put up throughout the city. There are other cities that have been able to regulate their sign issues, Yorba Linda and other cities. The problem is with, is with the number of signs and the type of signs that are allowed, i.e. area experts, Karate Kid signs, signs with a soul with the arrow pointing nowhere, thank you first responders. They should be for an event and only for an event sign, garage sales, school events, and yes, open houses. It was brought to the attention of the planning committee. Ms. Klett, I believe you mentioned there was over $600,000 of uncollected fees. Is that correct? Approximately, what was the amount that was put out?
That amount has not been verified. That is not true.
Is there approximate amount that was mentioned?
There was by a commissioner, but not by staff.
Okay, okay, good deal. Well, there's the amount that's there, and again, it's not being collected. Let me ask you guys, in all seriousness, have you ever been in a sports team or in a class where somebody has messed up? I did it in wrestling. The coach gets up, sends, says, go, all of you, take off and run, or you're all staying for detention. Who messed up? Was it the whole class? Was it everybody? Is that great leadership on that coach's part? No, it was not. This is a time we could come together and work together and solve the problem. It'd be a great time, a coachable moment, as I like to call it. Currently, we have a lack of enforcement has been stated. I'm willing to volunteer. I have a pickup truck. Shoot, I'd volunteer and go pick up signs. Digital versus analog, it's in all due respect, it's coming, but it's not there yet. Wes speaks, you're holding an analog device in your hand. Use your phone. Record your voice. It's database. You can send it to all of the council members. You can send it to the people here for their notes. And I don't mean to be a little snippy on that, and I do apologize. I think there should be a penalty too. I think it should be a $20 penalty, first time offenders. Reason why it's so low is because if it's an out-of-area agent, great. It should go 50, and there's a violation a third time, total sign ban for that person on there. There's other rules that I would like to see implemented, like it should be in MLS. If it's my listing, and let's say Wes, you have the one right in front of me, so I'm using your name, is holding the house open and needs to be in his name. So you can see that enforcement, and I'll volunteer, will go and say, oh, Wes is holding open houses. He's limited to X number of signs. I think signs should be put up Saturday morning, taken down Saturday night. Put up Sunday morning, taken down Sunday night. If the violators will not violate as much if they have that extra work to do. And thank you guys for your time.
Good afternoon, City Council, Mayor, City Manager, or Attorney, and everybody here present. My name is David Brambella. I am a 15-year broker with a-- and also a, I also have a marketing company in Corona, so I have two businesses in Corona. Now, I am a member of TIGAR for the last 15 years. They oppose this ban. We're talking about the largest local organization representing realtors. There's hundreds of realtors here, and we're about to punish all realtors, all businesses, for the act of a few. Let's think about that. We already have legislation or a ban in place. It's not being enforced. So what is another fallout ban going to do? The people for and against it have been saying the same thing. There is no teeth. City of Corona is not fining those that need to be fined, the offenders. We have another organization here, the Chamber of Commerce, who opposes this. They oppose it for businesses. It's not in the good interest of business. It's not just realtors that are using the signage. The small businesses are using them. And also the small realtors, that's all they, that's the only marketing and advertising that they rely on to sell a house. You know, Keller Williams was given, was given a little shot that they have X amount of realtors. Mr. Dave Clark came up here and talked about the good that they're doing and how much they love this city. There's a lot of realtors that love this city, like myself, Dave Clark, and many of us here present. So much so, I'll give you an example. On May 9th, Keller Williams is going to be sending 60 of their agents to post 742, a veteran organization, to clean up and make that organization even better, representing our veterans. So I challenge you to please reject this that's up on the board that you guys are about to vote on. There is a middle ground. Let's work together. As far as a board member of the Chamber of Commerce, the city has a, the Chamber of Commerce has this, this committee called the BERT Team, Business Emergency Response Team. Usually, we're dispatched to Sacramento and Washington DC to bad, to fight bad bills. If you're not aware, it's on the front page of this issue's magazine. It saddens me that this team got activated for the city of Corona. Let's work together. Let's reject this ban and let's fix the problem together. Thank you very much.
Mayor, City Council People, distinguished guests, Bob Livingston, 835 North Main Street here in Corona. First, I want to say, I have to applaud every one of you sitting up on the dais. Thank you for volunteering and putting in so much time to deal with us. Look, I'm a Realtor. I've heard a lot of people talk this evening, and you know my opinion because I sent you a letter twice, right? So here's the reality. People have abused, and not just realtors, every business in this city. They've abused what little sign ordinance we do have. And what we, and really, it's an unmanaged system that needs to be resolved, right? Simply put, the abuse by all businesses is abysmal. To try to put a check and balance system in place, I believe will only lead to more abuse and a shorthanded code enforcement to try to manage it. So we legislate, we manage, we enforce, right? How does that get done? And who's going to pay for it? Everybody talks about how we're going to get this done and bring in more staff and have everybody take care of it, but where's that money going to come from? The staffing cost alone is going to be insurmountable. There are some who say we should set up a permit process for open houses, say five per open house and a certain amount of feet from each location. My God. How do you manage that? How do you, how do you know in one part of the city or the other, you got somebody running open house signs over here, and in the south end of the city, in the north end of the city, and then over on the end of McKinley? How do you know who's talking to who? Because you're going to have to have probably seven, eight code enforcement officers out doing the job, but yet you have all these signs and nobody knows who's doing what with who. And it's out there, guys. I mean, open house signs to nowhere. You know, Dave Clark brought up a great point. I've never seen so many area experts in my entire life. Unbelievable. All right. The reality is, the signage abuse is like a mania. It's like substance abuse, right? They, you see some, and then you see more, and you see more, and you see more. And I have so many people in my neighborhood who like to give me a ration about what they're seeing and why am I not doing anything? I don't manage the city. I'm just a lowly Realtor who has to put up with it like everybody else does. I'm going to get down to the bottom line. My humble opinion, our city should spare its citizens of littering the green belts and follow the sign ordinance rules as they, as they are. I want to thank you for your time, and when you're reviewing this, just do the right thing for the greater good, for everybody, not just one person or one group. Enjoy your evening.
Again, if I'm a resident, one of the 176,000 people living here, I will say abolish. If I'm a real estate agent, I will say, we need the signs. We need to make a living. Well, I've been a real estate agent for over 35 years, one of my other trades. I've worked in different cities. I don't, even lately, I haven't seen that many signs out there. Nobody's looking at why. Why are we doing this? Why real estate agents need to put a sign, get up in the morning and ta, 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 put a sign out there? Unless we, me as a real estate agent, think, me as a resident, the residents are dumb. They can't read. You don't need a sign. In the old days, you need to bring someone to look at the house, you put a sign, here's the house. Now, you got all the media, you got all the online. I know it's real estate, you can't bring it to people to show it to them, like to them, like you bring some, you know, small, small objects. But you can show the house on Zillow, you can show it on whatever. You don't need to tell the public, come, come, there's a house here to the right. You know, the public knows there's a house for sale in this area, and if they are looking in this area, they can look at all, all the, all the media that's available to them to find a house. So I'm in the middle. I don't know whether we should abolish or not, to be honest with you. But if I have to side with someone here, probably the residents, and say abolish the signs, and for one reason, I'm a little bit ticked. One of my neighbors is a Realtor, and they got two signs on their own lawn, sitting there, never moved. So I think you should study it, look more at the issue, and instead of going like, nope, we're going to abolish, or maybe we should have like a common ground somehow. I'm sure Joanne can come up with some, or somebody, you know? So, thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for the honor of being here and speaking to you. My name is Adrian Anego. I am a resident of Corona for 25 years, past president of the Inland Gateway Association of Realtors, and I am speaking on behalf of all the realtors in our association. I know we do good. I love the city and all the realtors we try-- can you guys hear me? Okay, I hear a back sound here. So anyway, I am against the ban because I think it is important for us to have it. I understand that we can use technology, but not everybody does. So what, are we going to discriminate against the people that don't have a cell phone? No, we need to be open to everybody. So to me, it's very important. I work the city, I put my signs, I follow the rules, I have my license in the city, so I'm one of the good ones. So please, don't penalize everybody for the damage of a few. Just follow the rules. Just put the penalties that you set. I will be able to help if you need in any way. So I'm voting against the ban. Thank you.
Good evening. Joe Morgan, 2063 Ren. Just to be perfectly clear, the thousands of signs that are out on the weekends, littering and causing the unanimously stated blight in Corona are legal. They're legal. They're all legal. You know, so if you didn't have a rule against incest, you know, you got to make a rule at some point. The only way you can do this is to make a rule and say ban it. And it's so, it's so weird to have like a group of people that so willingly recognize the issue, but want to pass off the problem to somebody else. Just know that Riverside City bans signs outright, period, 100%. The only sign you can have is non-commercial, has to be held by a human, period. Ontario banned signs. The Chino banned signs. Riverside County banned signs. There's a unanimous ban. Yes, there is. Despite what it says on the TIGAR website, go look up the code. Go look up the code. So, you know, those signs out there on, on Foothill and Lincoln and all over South Corona are legal, all over McKinley, they're all legal. You got to do something about it. Everybody knows, all the realtors know. And this is really no different than the, than the short-term rentals. You had what, 22? You had 22 short-term rentals. You had two of them that were causing a unanimous, you know, just a gigantic amount of the problem, and you banned them because the good that it got, that those 22 permits brought to the city were far outweighed by the damage that those two were causing, the police calls and the drama, and in this case, the blight. Everybody agrees on the blight. But every, they all want the city to incur additional expenses, maybe wheel a tape out distances between signs, you know? So, you know, when you've got Tortola Group, Diana Rene, Navid Zuberry, Nolasco Umberta, John Simcoe, Bieta Blazal, they're bringing truckloads of signs to the city, truckloads. Okay? Tortola has a fleet of Transit Connects parked in its parking lot. They're, they're just all over the city. You got these, you got like nine or 10 realtors-- You got these, you got like nine or 10 Realtors that are crapping up the city. I didn't hear any of them here. I didn't see, I didn't hear any of them. I know all the names, trust me. Ryan Sweeter, the guy that does the little signs, I know his name because I picked up a bunch of his signs on Monday, because I'm the guy that picks up the signs on Mondays now. So, you know, now it's the siding companies, the patio companies, the pool repair places, the sandwich places, the, the Taekwondo place, that's, they're loving it, Main and Foothill. Pressure washing, moving. Where's it going to stop? It could stop, just like it does in other cities. Everybody came in here and said, why is Corona such a mess? You know, because, because Ms. Coletta's not out there writing tickets and, and going and taking money out of people's wallets. You could just not have them, just like other cities. Thank you very much.
My name is Wendy Gonzalez. I am the manager of Keller Williams Corona. How do I follow that? I just want to... the motions that have been made already this evening regarding the ask that you guys do not move forward with a ban, and that the last gentleman was speaking of how we're not willing to enforce or help with enforcement. We are more than willing to help with enforcement. In fact, the, the proposal that was put together back in fall included terms of us assisting with that enforcement. And so I would ask that you guys would revisit that and give us an opportunity to come to an agreement that would be for the better judgment of both the residents and the Realtors in this city. I also would like to note that while those agents that were just mentioned are bringing boatloads of signs to the city, they are also bringing boatloads of taxable, or tax income to the city as well. They're all residents of the city, they all love this city, and they all do business in this city. And that's a huge part of the, the income that, that comes from the city. So, I think it's important for us to pay attention to that. I also want to touch on something that I've heard a few times tonight in regards to digital marketing. I think there's a huge blind spot for digital marketing as it's being proposed here. The cost of digital marketing and buying back our leads on digital marketing is astonishing, and I won't get into the details of it, but we are fighting on all sides to protect our careers, whether it's the lawsuits that are, we're dealing with, with NAR, or it is the sign ordinance here in the city, or it's fighting against Zillow, Redfin, and all of the larger conglomerates that are trying to take our careers from us. We want to keep our jobs local, we want to keep our businesses flourishing in your city, and we would appreciate your, your attention to this matter and not vote yes on this ban. Thank you.
Thank you, one and all. Did anybody want to speak that didn't have a chance to speak? Okay, I think we're, I think we're good. You guys want to do questions first? Questions, comments? Okay, let's do question and comments. Tony's good. Wes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, everybody that came. Really appreciate it. I was just talking to a resident this week, and they were lamenting that it doesn't matter if you come, the council doesn't care, they don't listen. And I assured them that we appreciate, even when we disagree, or when we don't take your recommendation, we appreciate that you come. We, the fact that you're in the room is awesome, and I, I think all my, my colleagues would agree with me, the fact that you're all here is, is really good. My, my experience with, with signs is, when I got first elected in 2018, I think it was probably one of the first items I brought to the, to the council at the time was, I wanted to look at signs. I said, man, we, we have a lot of signs, and this was 2019, 2020. And I think at that point, I was counting, you know, between 200 and 300 signs on just two streets. And it was bad, but unfortunately, I didn't get support. I wanted to do something similar to what Chino Hills did, which they have a permit process and a limit on signs, and didn't get any traction at the time. And then, after COVID, you guys all saw, in fact, I think it was unanimously, you know, I think everybody that stood up at the podium agreed with me, that, you know, there's hundreds and hundreds of signs. I think our planning commissioner, Karen Alexander, went out and counted a couple of weekends, you know, a few other residents were sending me snapshots and pictures, almost 600 signs, 600 signs on two streets. And less than 10% of them were, were open house signs. And it's, it's, it's a blight. It's, it really is. I've had the same experience with people that have come to visit the city and said, what's up with all the signs? It just becomes a menagerie of, of just information that, that people don't, don't even see. So, you know, one of the items I, you know, worked with Paul from Tygar for probably six months, he and I met two or three different times trying to figure out, you know, because frankly, I didn't think I had the, the votes enough to go forward with a, with a ban, but coming up with an idea of how we could kind of, you know, get to a, you know, a middle ground with the understanding that, and I think that Paul agreed with me at the time, that I still don't think that the Realtors are going to behave. I still think that folks are going to take advantage. And the, the deal I made with Paul was, if we agreed, you know, to this middle ground, that after a year, that Tygar would support a ban. With the full understanding that, I, I didn't think frankly, like, and I talked to the Realtors that were mentioned today. I, I had probably a couple of dozen Realtors call me after the fall workshop to say, you know, ask me questions about the ban, you know, say, well, what does it mean? And clarified, this means there's no signs allowed in the right of way. Doesn't mean you can't put an open house sign on a piece of public, you know, on a private person's property. Couldn't go knock on someone's door and put an open house sign on their, in their front yard to say, hey, it's okay if I put a sign here. Totally okay, the city doesn't regulate that. And even the folks that were putting up hundreds of signs said, all right, that's fine, we'll, we'll figure it out. And I was quite dismayed with, with some of the information that I saw, that we were attacking open house signs. We were, and I, I realize that that's the focus because that's what you guys are worried about. But there are so many other, you know, so many other signs, not just open house signs. I mean, I think the, the most open house signs I saw on a weekend was about 40. The least I saw was four. And a couple of very successful Realtors, Realtors that have been in town here for a very long time, that have sold a lot of houses, and I saw them, you know, selling houses literally every single weekend, you know, they closed a lot of houses, with four, five signs, four or five signs. So I, I don't, I don't get it. I, I wish that we could find a, a way in the middle, but I, I'm, I'm struggling with it. Because even after the, the fall workshop, when the, you know, ban surprised me too. Three of my colleagues decided that they were going to vote for a ban. I voted no, because I, I had worked with, with Paul and was trying to come up with something that would work. And so I've struggled with this because it's, it's, I, I definitely see it's a problem. I think everybody in this room sees it's a problem. And I think there are ways around it, but I'm, I'm also cognizant of the fact that any chance that, anything that we do that's besides a ban puts pressure on staff, an insane amount of pressure. A code enforcement person that, I mean, we've, you know, hired additional code enforcement person, people to work on other issues, there's a lot of other issues in the city, but to go around and have to, you know, count signs and measure distances and, and all those things is a lot of work, a lot of work. And they don't get any, you know, they get guff for it, too. I've had Realtors call me and say, hey, I'm really pissed off because code enforcement picked up my sign, and, you know, yeah, it was a little close to the corner, or how do you measure the corner? And, and, you know, they're getting abused or yelled at by, by folks, and that's not fair either. So, you know, I, I don't have any questions other than I think I, I had asked Ms. Coletta earlier about the amount, the number of, or I asked city manager about how much we've, we find, and it is paltry, but I also understand it's hard to, to track down. It isn't just you guys, it isn't just the Realtors, it's, it's folks that are putting out advertisements for god knows what, and trying to track those people down and, and issue a fine to them is, is difficult, because they may have just a phone number, they may not have an address here, they may not, you know, so trying to spend staff time to go hound out, even if it was a $250 fine or, you know, $500 fine, it costs us $1,000 to chase that one. So, like I said, I'm, I'm torn, I'm conflicted, because I, I don't want to punish everybody, but at the same time, the residents of the city deserve better. That's where I am.
Mr. Ellis, could you remind me, how many code enforcement team members do we have working on Fridays and weekends?
On Fridays and weekends? Well, we have seven code enforcement officers. The actual number on weekends varies, I think, to a degree, depending on needs, but I'll let Joanne Coletta.
We only, yeah, so because we do seven days of coverage, we have alternating schedules, so we have two people on Saturday and two people on Sunday, and that's a full staff if nobody calls in sick. So we always have two people.
Do we, and, and maybe, do I keep my questions? Okay. How many volunteers do we have in the code enforcement team?
We have one, and historically, we've had two, and we had two volunteers that worked for us for maybe three years, but now we're down to one, and it is very hard to get volunteers to do this. We have it out there, they've come in, they've done it for a couple of months and left. So when we get a volunteer that actually commits for over a year, it means that they're invested. But we are open to it, but it's hard to attract a volunteer that wants to do this.
I totally understand that. Do we have capacity for more volunteers? If we had capacity for five, 10 volunteers, would we be able to, to take them on as part of the team?
So we would alternate the volunteers, they would not all be on the same day because we, they use our trucks. So on the alternating days that we have code off, we would give them those trucks. So we do, we have to have a system in place for that.
And enforcing sign ordinance is not the only job that our code enforcement does over the weekends, right? Like, could you list some of the other things that they do on the weekends?
So because they, we have seven days of coverage, you have to remember, each code compliance personnel also has to carry their workload. So they're also involved in property maintenance, and they have a responsibility to follow up on all the cases they, they have ongoing. So when they're working a Saturday, yes, they do have sign detail, but then they also have to complete their workload as well. And then they also respond to any kind of things that come in from dispatch, then they'll deviate, they'll circumvent from what they're doing and go assist with a call that they may have gotten from dispatch.
Mr. Ellis, or Ms. Coletta, whoever can answer it, are the, the sign ordinance, the non-compliance, is it mainly from Realtors, a real estate line?
It's a little bit of both. So you'll have a business that'll come into town, and it is, it, it's what you see. So what you see, it means that, oh, I can do that. So you will have a business that will say, hey, I've been through Corona, they have signs out on the weekend, all of a sudden, you have, you see someone advertising a pool service, and they just thought it was allowed and didn't call. So it's a first-time offender. So come Monday, when we pick them up, we're making a phone call saying, by the way, this is what our regulations are. There are also signs that are non-traceable. We do have a lot of directional signage leading to a garage sale. There are other advertisements, like we can help you sell properties with an anonymous phone number, and we've even had PD to try, try to help us track that down. You cannot do it, there's a lot of man-hours and it's not worth our time. So it's not isolated to Realtors, it's everything. And again, it's a, it's a traceable situation. And I do want to say, I am, those signs are in compliance on the weekend. If some of them are not right, then they will pick them up. But I do think it's terrible that, you know, to sit there and say that staff has looked the other way is absolutely false. They have not done that. They are working within their capacity, and then come Monday, they are out there trying to clean up the streets.
Thank you. Thank you for correcting that record. I wanted to make sure. So, what we're seeing then is, we have an ordinance in place, and it is being followed and enforced. The problem with consequences, one would say, is that it's hard to trace, you know, who the signs belong to come Monday morning, when the ones that are left behind are left behind.
That's correct. And I could tell you, on Monday, I see a lot of Realtors at our front counter collecting maybe seven signs that they were picked up, they get told and they get issued a warning. And our code staff can tell you that they do not do a repeat violation once they've learned that.
Thank you, Ms. Coletta. One last question. Have we received inquiries from any, you know, associations, any groups, in wanting to volunteer to help us enforce this compliance? Mr. Ellis, have you, have we received any inquiries?
I have not. Joanne, have you? No.
You haven't? Okay. I appreciate it. So, you know, I, I, I've been pretty, oh, before I jump into my comments, I do want to correct the, the staff report. The staff report says that when this went to the Planning and Housing Commission, it was carried unanimously, but there was a no vote. There was a single no vote by Vice Chair Vernon. So I wanted to make sure that that, that the record is corrected. So, Mr. Speaker is correct. I mean, he, he has been on this since 2019. We've been talking about this and trying to find solutions for it. And, and it is lamentable, because I do think that there's parts of town that are more acutely suffering from sign littering than other parts of town. And I'm, that does, that, that doesn't escape me. I, I recognize it, and I recognize that it doesn't look good, and I recognize that there's frustration around it. That being said, you know, my concerns have, have remained. I'm, I'm concerned about what an outright ban does for microbusinesses, for political causes, for yard sales and garage sales. I, I hear everyone in the room, but, you know, I'm thinking about the folks that are not in this room that could be affected by an outright ban, and what that could do to their livelihood, or the movement, or whatever it is that they're working on. So, you know, I just, I have concerns about an outright ban. And then, I would say, that, you know, we've known for a while that, that this was leading and going in this, in this way. This discussion has been brought on to the council since 2019, and there have been, you know, an attempt to partner with local associations, and so I, I would have hoped that there would have been a more proactive approach from local associations to assist in regulation and volunteering in the code enforcement aspect of it all, because we can take on more volunteers, and clearly, we need them. So, those are my comments for tonight. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Jackie. Jim?
So I've, I watched the planning commission meeting twice now, and I want to commend specifically Planning Commissioner Alexander for putting in the work and actually going out and counting all the signs on some of the, not all the signs, a lot of signs on several of our streets, and it was ridiculous. In the last two years, code enforcement has picked up over 13,000 illegally placed signs. That's, that's embarrassing. The council recently voted to spend tens of millions of dollars in an effort to beautify parts of our city, and I just can't imagine why we would continue to allow such an archaic way of advertising, you know, with, with the littering of our city, when there's so many different ways to get your message out these days. And for me, I don't want, I don't want signs littering in our city, just like I don't want trash and graffiti, and there are even street vendors on every corner. I just think it brings too much clutter, and I think it brings down property values. And I think a, a majority of our residents would support banning signs on public right of ways. There are still areas you can place your damn signs, just not on public right of ways. That's my comments for now.
All right. Thank you, Jim. Ms. Coletta, I did have a couple of questions. If the ban passes, how is it enforced?
So what will happen now, if it's, if it does happen, and we have code out there on the weekend and they're seeing the signs, they will just automatically start picking them up, because there's no longer the provision that signs will be allowed in the right of way on the weekend. So what they're doing, they're waiting until the end of Sunday, and of course, code compliance is not out there working at Sunday at 8 o'clock at night, so come Monday. So if they're out there in the field on the weekend doing their route, they'll just start picking them up.
Thank you. And is it economical that the city can generate enough fines to effectively pay for city enforcement, or is that not fiscally?
I'll answer that question. No, that does not cover the cost for staff in terms of fines that are issued by any stretch.
Okay. And because of that pesky city of Gilbert, Arizona, we can no longer have just town of Gilbert, Arizona, we can, because of Gilbert and the Supreme Court, we can't have only open house signs, which is probably what's most valuable to realtors. Okay. I think that concludes my questions.
Mayor, sorry, really quick, before we close the public hearing, we do have somebody on Zoom that wants to provide comments.
Okay. Let's go ahead and do that.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is David England. I am a member of the Inland Gateway Association of Realtors. I have been selling real estate for 34 years. I am a Corona resident. I've been very concerned about signs throughout my career. This isn't my first rodeo of going to a council meeting to talk about signs. We met once at the Riverside County Supervisors when they wanted to ban all signs from county properties, all open house signs. And there was enough of us there to get their attention to say, we better talk to them. And they negotiated with us out in the lobby and said, we'll come up with a solution. And they did. And I don't know where that other guy says they're banned, but I haven't seen it changed since that happened. And that was around the year 2000. And our open house signs were allowed. I met with the city of Eastvale when they were having their growing pains and open house signs were going up. And they didn't ban them. They came to us and they talked to us and they listened. And we reached a conclusion, an agreeable conclusion that was good for us and good for them. And there hasn't been a problem since. And also in the city of Corona, and I think it was around the year 2010, we were having problems with signs. And once again, at that time, the council discussed it with us. They came to us, we came to them, we discussed the issues and we got the sign regulations made. And it stayed under control, unfortunately, until COVID. And then we have what we have now. But also at that time, when we were having a problem, we offered to volunteer to pick up signs for the violators. They told us we couldn't do it, insurance purposes, whatever other reason. And we weren't even going to ask for money. We just said we would volunteer our time and get the bad signs out and they wouldn't let us do it. So that's unfortunate. The speaker before on the council there that said they're bringing down house values or property values, have you looked at the price of homes lately? Has your house gone down in the last four or five years? I doubt it very much regardless of how many signs are up there. The signs are part of our business. We've been an organization in Corona since 1950. Over 70 years, the real estate, the Association of Realtors in Corona has been around for 70 years as a legal organization. And we've been doing open houses for 70 years. And now they want to take that right away. It's part of our business. It's the way we do business. Maybe not everybody has the ability to have to do signs for their business, but it is part of our business. I totally object to the ban. I think when the Planning Commission discussed it, it's just without even thinking, they wanted to ban it. There was no second thought. And I applaud the one commissioner that voted in favor of negotiation. And I think you should all vote in favor of negotiating with us and talk. We can work out a resolution. There is middle ground and just don't ban it for the sake of banning it. That's the worst thing you can do. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And with that, I'm going to close public hearings. And I believe there's no other comments to be made. Before we do go further, I would like to thank everyone for coming and speaking and participating. However this vote goes, the thanks is there. With that, do we have a motion? Do we have a motion? And do we have a second? Okay.
Mayor, I have a first from Councilmember DeDario, a second from Vice Mayor Steiner. And the motion needs to be read.
All right, Tony, have at it.
Introduced by Title Only and Way Full Reading of Consideration Ordinance Number 3392. First reading of an ordinance amending Section 17.74.070, prohibited signs of Chapter 17.74, signs of Title 17, zoning in Section 5.44.100 of the Corona Municipal Code to prohibit temporary signs in the public right-of-way, ZTA 2024-0002.
There you have it. All right. Moving on to administrative reports, there are none. Legislative matters, there are none. Board and commissions, reports from City Council, commissioners and staff, we are none. And now Planning and Housing Commission, number 24. You know, wait a couple of seconds, let the room clear out. Okay. Here we go. Before I announce this next agenda item, the Planning and Housing Commission Report, there's going to be some things that are a little out of order tonight. And so this is how it's going to go down. For this agenda item, by way of a lawyer letter, I have been recused of the ability to vote on this agenda item. And the reason is, is because as a council member, I showed bias publicly about this agenda item. And I have prepared a statement that I would like to read before I excuse myself. This is what I wrote. Yesterday at 12:58 PM, the law firm Jackson Titus of Orange County, on behalf of Foremost Pacific Development Group, strategically sent a letter last minute emailing asking that I be removed from voting on the horrible future development that's going to take place at Citron and Taylor. The reason given why my vote should be disqualified is at the last city council meeting, I made the comment that the horrible future development at Citron and Taylor should be killed. To explain further, as a current standing council member, I showed bias in stating that the horrible future development at Citron and Taylor should be killed. The truth is, is I did make that comment in the last council meeting. I've also made that comment when talking to the citizens that live near Citron and Taylor. Over the last few months, I've made that same comment many a times. Quite honestly, it's a horrible project. The developer should be ashamed and the developer should go away. The reason I have said such comments is the reason I have said such comments is that it is a horrible development. I just read that again. And the project needs to go away. To that end, I was surprised that Foremost Pacific Development Group paid their lawyers such an exorbitant amount of money to draft a letter asking to have my vote taken away. The truth is, is that I lost my ability to effectively vote on this horrible project last year, if not the year before, when the California State Assembly and the California State Senate put laws on the books saying that obnoxious developers such as Foremost could build housing and then build additional ADU housing, which is ADUs are the same size of a house, thus doubling the size of tract and subdivisions. It was the California State Assembly and the California State Senate that has now effectively in real time stripped local control from the Corona City Planning Commission and the Corona City Council. Shortly after my recusal here tonight, my four colleagues, who I hold in high esteem and love them dearly, are now faced with a decision to either vote in favor of this housing project that doesn't, that doesn't take into account parking, quality of life, the desires of the citizens or residents. Or they can vote no and feel the wrath of developers such as Foremost Pacific Development Group and their law firms such as Jackson Titus, who are here tonight. Tonight, in a matter of minutes, citizens will take to the podium for public comments, pleading with the council to vote no on this project. But my four wise, great and fellow council members will know that a no vote will cost the city possibly millions of dollars in litigation. And in the end, the developer will win in court and be able to build their obnoxious, horrible housing development. Going forward, I honestly don't know how to stop developers such as Foremost Pacific Group from their hit-and-run developments. They have California state law on their side. They bought the law. That said, roughly over a week ago, I asked for a future agenda item request, which is number 24, if you look at your agendas, for a Corona City authored letter to state assembly leaders and all California city councils detailing how the loss of local control is now hurting the city of Corona. As for the consequences of my actions, I'll face them. I apologize only to the citizens that I have now lost whatever fight I had left in me to stop this horrible development from happening. For the remainder of this agenda item tonight, I will stand with the citizens. I will be a citizen, not a politician. With that, I have to go be in timeout. And I will turn it over to Vice Mayor Steiner to run the meeting.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Okay, this item, Precise Plan 2023-008, to review the site plan, architecture, fencing and landscaping for 19 single-family dwelling units proposed on 4.73 acres located on the northwest corner of Taylor Avenue and Citron Street in the R-1-8.4 zone. Single-family residence, 8,400 square feet minimum lot size. Applicant Brian Berg, 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 whatever is here from Foremost. Does any staff or council member want a staff report on this?
I just had one question.
Well, you know what? I would like a staff report.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll try to be as swift as possible. I think many of you have questions. So as you indicated, this is a precise plan application. It's located at the northwest corner of Taylor and Citron Street. The property is about 4.73 acres. And it does have a zoning of R1 8.4, which is a single-family residential zone requiring a minimum lot size of 8,400 square feet. There was a tentative tract map that was approved on the project back in 2022. And that was to subdivide the property into 19 single-family residential lots. At the last council meeting, there was a comment made by the council that they would like to know what is within the council's jurisdiction when it comes to reviewing a precise plan application. So I just wanted to make sure that I provided that information to you this evening. A precise plan application is really looking at the site development standards based on the zoning designation of the property. This is not a land use application. Anything that you're reviewing with respect to a precise plan means that the use is already allowed by the zoning. So now we're looking at the physical attributes of the project. So what we have to look at, does it comply with the zoning standards? Is it a permitted use? And does it adhere to the development standards? Simple things as, you know, the building setbacks, building height and lot coverage. Also, does it comply with our general plan with respect to the land use designation? And does it comply with our residential design guidelines? I do want to make note that in our design guidelines, it does not require a specific architectural style. What it talks about is that these guidelines are intended to complement the mandatory development standards that are within our zoning code. And that we're also to be looking at the character of the neighborhood and looking at the type of architecture that's going in. And whether that be building style, the form, the color, the building materials and the roof lines, all of that needs to be taken into consideration. And then finally, is it also complying with our landscaping and fencing requirements as well as other conditions of approval that have been placed on the project through the tentative tract map? So this here is the project site plan for the development. As I indicated, it's 19 single-family dwellings. The developer is proposing seven one-story floor plans within the project. And those areas are highlighted in green. And what the developer did, he did strategically locate the single-story dwellings adjacent to existing single-story homes where it really shares a property line with the existing neighborhood. There are 12 two-story floor plans that are shown in that light purple area that have been dispersed throughout the area. Our guidelines do require that 15% of the total units be single-story. This developer is providing 37% for a total of those seven one-story units. The one-story floor plan is just about 1,500 square feet. And that's without the garage. When you add the garage, it gets close to 2,000. And then the two-story floor plan is anywhere from 1,600 to 1,800 square feet without the garage. But when you add the garage, you're just over 2,000 square feet. And all of this, all of the building coverage on these lots do adhere to our lot coverage for both single-story and two-story units. What we do show for informational purposes is the accessory dwelling units. And that's what you see highlighted in the yellow. As most of this council is aware, according to state law, ADUs are not subject to discretionary review. And ADUs do need to be approved ministerially by city staff. But for informational purposes and for full disclosure, they were provided on the site plan for this project. These are going to be single-story ADUs locating the rear of the property. And the square footage is 1,100 square feet. This here just gives you what the building elevations will look like within the new development. They are proposing French country and Tuscany elevations. And again, they're using stucco, stone and brick veneer, as well as window framing. And they're using hip and gable roofs. Same thing for the two-story elevations. And same in terms of the architectural theme. And they've also complied with our residential design guides and the fact that when you look at a two-story home, they've done a split level design there that you can see on the craftsman. So you can see above the garage where it goes single-story and then it goes to a two-story element. And then on the other units, you see that the second floor is recessed back. So it's not a flat facade in the front of the house. They have provided deviation. And that's exactly what our guidelines say that they are required to do. Nobody here is refuting the fact that this is a well-established neighborhood and that it does contain mostly single-story homes. The homes were built in around 1962 and in the early 1970s. And that just was what was built at the time. Mostly you had single-story homes in that area. And there is a little bit of, you know, similar style. So I just wanted to make sure that I showed you what that looked like, given that you just saw the architecture. And I also wanted to let you know that we are aware of the current condition out there. The landscape plan, this is mostly important when it comes to the parkway, especially along Taylor Avenue. There was a lot of discussion regarding the mature palm trees that exist along Taylor. The, there are 13 of them. Five of them do need to be removed because they are going to be in the location where new driveways are going to be proposed. Therefore, the developer will be relocating eight of those mature palm trees into the new parkway design once the roadway is improved. So we are saving eight of those trees. And that the five that are being removed have to be replaced at a ratio of two to one. And then they will be working with community services on where those, where that replacement ratio will go. And then finally, there is a wall plan that was submitted. With all new residential development, especially perimeter fencing, developers are required to do block walls. When it comes along that shared property line, there is some existing block walls that will be protected in place. However, the developer will be installing new block walls in the areas where there is currently wood fencing. So where a homeowner has wood fencing on their property, once that block wall is built, they have the option of actually taking down their wood fencing if they would like to use the new perimeter wall that is being constructed. So the recommendation this evening before the city council is to affirm the decision by the Planning and Housing Commission and approve the precise plan. I am here to answer any questions. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Coletta. Ms. Edwards, do we have any speaker cards? Looks like we have at least three.
Vice Mayor, yes, we have six speaker cards for this.
Okay.
Okay.
My name's Don Fuller. I'm a resident here in town. If Mr. Richens is a drinking man, I'll buy the first round. I don't know if he is or not. I didn't know anything about this, wasn't paying attention until last meeting when Mr. Morgan brought this up. So in the past week or so, I drove over through this neighborhood. Looks like a fairly conventional neighborhood for several blocks around, and this abomination that's going to go in on that blank piece of land right there. I went and looked at that, and it would, you can look at the map of the area, and all of the streets in that area are on an north-south or east-west configuration with 90-degree corners. And so it makes sense, if you look at what's already there, for Lorraine Street, which is the vertical one, actually to continue straight down to Citron, and for Suzanne to continue straight east over to Taylor, and have a 90-degree corner in that, in the middle of that, and have an intersection and a track layout that would match what was already there. But instead, this group of houses, which is not really going to be anything at all like what's there for blocks around, this is going to be kind of a glorified apartment complex. Instead, for these people to get to the interior of this, where you see that little L-shaped corner of Suzanne and Lorraine, they're going to have to drive through the existing neighborhoods to get there. And those existing neighborhoods look to me to be nice, well-kept, fairly quiet neighborhoods. There was on one corner, I saw one of those little neighborhood libraries where people can take a book and leave a book in exchange for it and so forth. So it looked like a nice neighborhood, nice place to live. And all of a sudden, their lives are going to see cars going up and down through those streets to get to the interior of this new group of homes that just go on in. So there are a lot of things wrong with this, and that's just one of the ones that I noticed. And it's going to be nothing at all like what's around there for several blocks around there. It's just going to stick out like, I guess you could say, the proverbial sore thumb because I can't think of a much better metaphor. But it's really not going to fit with anything around there, and the best thing I can say about this is that I won't be living there. So I'm glad I'm not living there, and that's the nicest thing I can say about it. And by the way, one other little thing on the last item, those people who booed Mr. Morgan when he was up here, they should know he's one of the very best citizens in town, and he gives up his Monday mornings to go pick up those signs around town. So they will boo him. They boo one of my good friends. So that's what I think of this abomination going in on that corner, and that's also what I think of Mr. Morgan. So thank you very much for your time. Everybody get home safe.
Thanks, Don.[773.23][773.23](APPLAUSE).
My name is Martha Silvantes, and I was here last time, and I'm here again with everybody. I'd like to go ahead and mention a couple of things just to go ahead and highlight, okay? And I think pretty much we've already discussed that. The items that we wanted to go ahead and bring about is, this developer has approached, they said that they have approached the citizens that live within the neighborhood untrue. They never did. A letter, maybe, that's it. But they never went house to house to go ahead and contact or speak to the residents to go ahead and get our opinion. I've seen the gentleman. I think he's a, I looked him up. I think he's the vice president of Foremost. Now, Foremost, I did some research. Foremost is the developer, and there is another branch of the company, and you see it on their website. They don't sell properties. They don't. They rent. So this lot is not going to be properties that are going to be sold. They're going to be rental. So that's my really real concern. They have misrepresented a lot of information. They have told, said that they have contacted the residents, which is completely untrue. I have a couple of concerns also about that specific. As I mentioned, come over in about a year and a half when these properties go up, it's not going to be homes for sale. They're going to be rentals. Now, I live on Lorraine, and we've been there. Most of us have been there, like my neighbor Jerry, Mary, and many others. We've been there for probably 30 years. I know I have been there plus 30 years, raised our kids. I'm not concerned, or I'm not trying to go ahead and say that improvement or progress is not a good thing. But they do have to go ahead and take consideration, and they have not taken into consideration the impact of traffic. I'd like to see somebody go ahead and move to our neighborhood that's been very quaint. Everybody knows each other. We've known each other forever. Suddenly, we're going to go ahead and have a situation where we're going to have exactly what you saw there, people racing down Lorraine, trying to go ahead and get through that neighborhood. Of course, nothing against renters. My children rent because that's all they can afford. Oh, by the way, one of the reasons that the rental property has gone up just crazy, it's precisely because of that. These types of developers, they are the ones that have pushed the property. It's more profitable to go ahead and invest in rentals than homes. It's an assured income coming in. So again, I hope that you folks really think about it. It is going to be what it is going to be, but again, ultimately, we don't intend to just go ahead and sit here and let things just happen. That's not what our neighbors and what our family, our family is our neighbors.
Thank you, ma'am.[1003.36][1003.36](APPLAUSE).
So, my name is Rick Cleveland. 73 years in Corona, 40 years at my current address, which is 1735 South Vicentia, corner of Vicentia and Suzanne. What you're going to vote on is 19 homes plus another 19 rentals. So you actually have 38 homes with 38 families moving into. Vicentia, I live on a corner looking west of the six homes west of me on Vicentia. There have been three ADUs built in the last three years. So I have successfully endured the traffic additional parking issues of three ADUs on those six properties. So I can only imagine what's going to happen in this housing project. So in your agenda, my name's down there saying that we need a traffic signal. I'm not quite sure I said that. To be perfectly honest, standing here in front of the city council, I'm dismayed at your planning commission after having them listen to all of us and tell us, your commissioners, that they spoke to people on those streets. Find one for me because I cannot. I cannot find a person that they spoke to that agrees with this. So then I'll open it up to when I look at your agenda tonight. I am also a realtor in Corona. You did a bad thing, I think, voting down a sign, taking away people's business. Signs work, or they wouldn't be there. I don't like them anymore, and you do, but they work, okay? The one thing that I think should probably go on when I bought my house 40 years ago was we were told that corner was going to become a park. So instead of you spending money on city park, of which when I was six years old going down to learn how to swim at the plunge, my dad, who was an employee of the city for 32 years, would tell me, "Do not stay. Go swim, go learn, and get out of there. I do not want you at the park." That was when I was six years old. Why would you waste your money on that facility? Sell it to a developer, build some condos in there for some people so you don't have homelessness, which you'll never occur, happen in Corona, but that's one thing you could do, and buy that land from Foremost and make it a city park. Because what you're going to open up is unbelievable.[1191.33][1191.33](APPLAUSE). Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Ralph. I've been in the city of Corona for almost 50 years, and I think we all know that it's a horrible project. We're hoping that you guys are going to stop them from building. It's that simple. Just say no, stop them from building, and let's keep Corona beautiful like it is. That's it. Thank you.[1227.15][1227.15](APPLAUSE).
I am Paulette Perry, and I live on West Citron Street, directly across the street from the property of discussion. You showed my house this evening up on the board. I've lived there since 1975. I'm a 50-year resident. There are many issues with what the builder is proposing. I handed you a paper. Did you get them out? This one? Okay? First, they want to cut down the existing 13 historical palm trees that were built, that were planted on Taylor Street. These plants were planted in 1880 by Mr. Taylor. The street's named Taylor after him. Hawks, owls, bats, falcons, crows, hummingbirds, phoebes, goldfinches, mockingbirds, and orioles are housed in those palms. They are now nesting, as they do each year, in those trees. The fish and wildlife define nesting season as February through August. That means there can be no building except September through December. It could be earlier because of the species of the bird, or it could be later because of the species of the bird. These birds are protected by the Migratory Bird Treaty Act and in California by the California Migratory Bird Protection Act of 2019. That's just the first issue. Other issues such as traffic, parking, overpopulation of our neighborhood. Do you know what happens when you put too many mice in a cage? Do you? They eat each other. Not building to the existing neighborhood. I have a 3,600-square-foot home on a third of an acre, and they want to put in these houses that they consider to be what my neighborhood looks like? I don't think so. Two-story homes, style and look of the existing homes, too many homes in only 4.73 acres. All of the homes across the street are third acres. The block walls are very much a concern of all of us. This is my neighborhood and my city. We are a close-knit community, and I take great pride in my beautiful city that I take part ownership of. We stand as one. Do not allow this to tear apart our well-established neighborhood.
Thank you, ma'am.[1452.11][1452.11](APPLAUSE).
My name's Mary Cox, and I lived at Lorraine Avenue for the last 30 years. I was actually born in Corona, so I've been here a very long time. I'm going to ask you to say no to this development, not just because of the birds thing, but also because it is a poor design. I listened to Mr. Bergeron on February 12th. He stated that he had talked to many people about this, and they're all in favor. Well, before you, you have my map. We talked to everyone except for the ones in white. You notice they're all pink? You have it, you should have it before you. Do you have it before you? Okay. They are adamantly against this. Behind that are over 160 signatures. We canvassed the neighborhood. They are adamantly against it. I did not run into one person who was for this development. Let's see. Paulette has the originals, if you want to see them. Also, at the planning meeting, I decided to ask for the public records, okay? And Mr. Bergeron has not been forthcoming to us or to the planning commission. If you notice the second paper I gave you, and they, he, they asked him if he had talked to all the neighbors about the fencing. He, he kind of didn't answer that question, but he kind of said he did. Well, he did not. I talked to seven out of the eight. None of them had been talked to Mr. Bergeron. So Mr. Bergeron hasn't been honest on many issues, and I feel that the planning commission listened to him, believed him, and passed this. And that is really unfortunate. And these are just two examples that I gleaned from the Public Records Act of his dishonesty to us, to the planning commission, and to you. So I ask you to please pause and let us work with Mr. Bergeron, if he wants to work with us. Obviously, I don't think he does, but let us get to the bottom of what's really going to go on there, you know? You're the city council. We voted you to represent us, the citizens of Corona. So please vote in our best interest and not in the best interest of Foremost Pacific Group. You know, I know he's donated a lot of money to a lot of campaigns, and he's buying up a lot of land in Corona, but you don't want a bunch of rentals. We want people to be part of our community. We want homeowners. We want first-time homeowners. If he turned these in, the first-time homes, then we would all be happy. We just don't want rentals. So please, we beg of you, don't ruin our neighborhood. Listen to us as residents. Thank you very much.
Thank you.[1636.45][1636.45](APPLAUSE).
Joe Morgan, 2063 Ren. So I'm shocked that the guy from Foremost is being deceitful or dishonest. I'm just, it's hard for me to even get my head around. This whole thing has been kind of a scam from the beginning, and it's not 38, it's not 37, 30-something units, it's 50-something units. Because they didn't mention the attached ADU, the garage is going to be an ADU. So it's three residences per R184 lot, and they're trying to kind of game the design to do that. You don't have to let them do that. This doesn't fit with the neighborhood. It doesn't look like the neighborhood. It doesn't conform with the design of the neighborhood. It doesn't look anything like it. This is not, this is not a harmonious design with the neighborhood. You could just have them design the same ones. And look, nobody's thinking that you're going to be able to eliminate this nonsense, but you can make it less bad by making the main dwelling conform to the neighborhood. So, you know, I don't know if this is going to be a super-popular thing. You'd be better off, the neighborhoods would be better off if this was built, if they were just honest about it and just wanted to build townhomes. At least the parking will be taken care of. What's going to happen here is that you're going to have three individual dwellings on each lot that are not connected. One of the things that works for the ADU thing, and one of the reasons why we haven't had a whole bunch of uproar, is because the homeowner does the ADU, and they're not going to rent it out to somebody they don't get along with. They have an understanding. You know, it's a cooperative arrangement. This is detached townhomes with a management company. None of these people are going to know each other. This isn't a family. This isn't friends. This isn't somebody you apply, you know, the people in the front house or the people in the garage. This is going to be three individual families or operate, you know, like, living in three different dwelling units, all sharing one driveway. This isn't well-thought-out, and they're gaming, they're gaming the lot coverage and the design standards in order to get by with it. I really find, it's really ironic that the people that are cheating the system are, you know, they're mad that Tom actually said the truth, you know? I mean, it's just wild. So thank you very much.[1780.23][1780.23](APPLAUSE).
Thanks, Joe.
My name is Greg Powers.
My name is Greg Powers, the law firm Jackson Titus. I am land use counsel to the applicant, Foremost Pacific Group. I'm the evil lawyer who submitted the letter. But I will tell you, the point of the letter was to simply set forth the law when it comes to a project like this, because this is the exact kind of project that the state legislature is encouraging local agencies to approve. That's why they adopted the Housing Accountability Act of 2018 and the Housing Crisis Act of 2019, because the state is in a housing crisis of historic proportions. And so the legislature is encouraging housing. And this project has been designed in such a way that it is consistent with the general plan designation for the site. It's consistent with the zoning designation for the site. It's consistent with all the objective development standards for the general plan and the zoning for the site. It's consistent with the city's design guidelines. It's consistent with the subdivision standards. And it's consistent with ADU laws. So this is a project that falls squarely within the Housing Accountability Act. And Foremost worked hard to design a project that fits with, on that envelope, because that's what is needed in the state. And they've worked hard to make a quality project, despite what you're hearing from others tonight. They've made concessions, including dropping the Spanish elevation and the palm trees. I'd like to also clarify for the record, let me be absolutely clear on this point. There will not be three units per lot. There will be, the, the project that is being proposed, and it's depicted on the site plan, that's Exhibit 2 to your staff report, shows one primary dwelling unit and one detached accessory dwelling unit. That's it. The third car garage is not proposed to be an ADU. That is not what this project proposes. So I want to make sure that's crystal clear. We, we respectfully request that the council do the right thing tonight and approve this project. They want to bring a quality project to Corona. As you have probably seen in my letter, under the Housing Accountability Act, there are very limited ways to deny a project that is consistent with the general plan and zoning and design, and design guidelines. Essentially, you must find that the project will result in a specific public health and safety risk, and that that cannot be mitigated under any circumstance. And it has to be based on a thorough analysis of all the social and economical factors associated with the project. And those findings have to be based on substantial evidence in the administrative record. It's a very high standard, because that's the way the law was written. And Foremost didn't write the law. The legislature did, and the governor did. And these are all housing laws encouraged by the state because of this housing crisis that the state is in. So with that, we respectfully request that you approve the project here, or actually, I guess what I should say is, take no action, and which thereby uphold the Planning Commission's approval, the unanimous approval of this project. Thank you very much.
Sir, I got a quick question for you. When you say that the state's encouraging housing?
Yes.
That's not what I've been told all along the last few years. It's they're forcing us to build houses.
(APPLAUSE)
Encouraging isn't, encouraging isn't the word, sir. It's, it's, the governor has said that he will send arm, he will send HCD to council meetings, to boardrooms, to force votes. Don't, encouraging is not a word. It's not a, no word I would use either, sir.
If it was encouraging, I'd vote no tonight. But we're, it's not encouraging. We're being forced.
Well, I'm telling you what the Housing Accountability Act says.
It doesn't encourage, sir.
Okay. Well, we, I, I respect.
I mean, I know you're the lawyer, but I'm telling you, you're using the wrong word.
I respect your opinion, but I encourage you to read the recitals to the Housing Accountability Act.
I, sir, I've read it. I, I said, I'm the South Cities.
Are you gonna be here for, to speak for the applicant when we have other questions?
I'm, I'm speaking now, because I wasn't called up to do an application presentation.
Right, no, I know. But you'll be available to answer any questions?
I am available. And so, and I should state, so is Brian Bergeron for Foremost, if you have questions about the project.
Okay, good, good, good. Glad he's here. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Can I come up here?
No, ma'am, I'm sorry. If we, if you've already spoken, you've gotten your time in, so I'm sorry. All right. Ms. Edwards, any other speakers?
Vice Mayor, we do not have any more speaker cards.
Okay, and no written comments either?
We do not.
Okay, thank you. Do I have any questions or comments from my colleagues? Tony?
Yeah, if the applicant is here, I have some questions for the applicant.
Sure. There he is, in the back. He's coming on up.
Good evening. Mr. Bergeron, did, there was a lot of accusations that were, that were made here tonight. Did you or anybody from your staff at Foremost have any conversations with the residents?
Yeah, so we sent out a mailer to all of the residents per your guys' guidelines. I think it was a 300 or 500-foot radius map that was sent out, along with a letter, asking all the surrounding neighbors if they have any questions to please give me a call. Several of the surrounding homeowners did call me and talk to me, or emailed me, Mrs. Cox being one of them that's here, and asked questions regarding the development. So we gave her information, and there was a bunch of other people on Mrs. Cox's email chain as well, that lived in the surrounding area, where every question that she asked was answered.
Okay. And then, was this project always, I don't, I don't recall, but was it always intended to have ADUs on it? Or did you add those later?
So the original project, that, with the tenant map that got approved, was for 19 lots. This precise plan, which perfects those entitlements, always showed the ADUs.
Okay. And are you guys going to be the one that is managing the properties as well? Or do you, do you farm that out to somebody?
Well, we, we manage our properties, yes. So we'll manage the construction and the implementation of those projects.
Well, these are intended for rental, right? So are you gonna be the property manager for the rental?
These are intended to be built out. We don't know if it's gonna be a rental project yet, like I mentioned before, or a for-sale project.
So you guys haven't decided, or nobody's come forward and said, hey, we wanna, we wanna own it to be the renters? Or we want to buy them individually?
No, we have not. We, we actually are seeking right now a current investor to fund the project, and that investor will dictate how we proceed.
Okay. Do you have, do you guys, have you guys done any analysis on what the rents could be?
Uh, yes, there is, but I don't have them off the top of my head.
Are they, are they in the affordable?
Their market rate.
So they're not affordable housing?
No, their market rate.
So you're just building market-rate rentals?
That's correct.
Gotcha. Kind of not really in the spirit of housing that the state is asking for, is it?
(APPLAUSE)
I don't have any more questions.
Blessing?
Thank you. Thank you for coming, I appreciate it.
No problem.
You've answered, I think I had a couple of questions about the rental thing. I'm much, I think you've answered it. And I also read the, the, the letter that, that Ms. Cox provided. And, and you, you answered the question. You, and you were saying tonight that you, you physically didn't go talk to anybody, but you didn't do the mailers as required by the, by the city. And I, I did watch the Planning Commission meeting a couple times, and I just wanted to clarify about the trees. You've agreed to move the trees for us at some, some future point?
Yeah, so Ms. Paulette and I had a subsequent conversation after the PC hearing. We agreed, if feasible, we would relocate eight of the palm trees. Five of them are impacted right now by the, the lots fronting that street, and so they're, they're physically will be removed. And then they'll be replaced at a two-to-one ratio.
So how many trees are there total of the large?
There's 13.
13 total, but you're, but five are gonna remain, and we're gonna move eight?
No, eight are, eight are gonna be remained, five are gonna be removed.
Okay, removed it and moved elsewhere.
No, removed.
Okay, why, why would they not be moved, like the, the other eight?
There's not enough room in that, that parkway to, to have all those trees there.
So my, Ms. Paulette is looking at me.
Yeah, so I, I think what you're thinking is that the eight are gonna be relocated. No, they're going to be pushed back into the new parkway, because Taylor needs to be widened.
Got it. I know you knew that part.
And after you widen Taylor, the palm trees will be in the gutter. So the eight palm trees are gonna get pushed back into the parkway.
Okay. So five of them, are they, will, will they be able for us to be moved elsewhere? Like, not on the site, but maybe elsewhere in the city? Because, and I'll, I'll, I'll give a little bit of background. I, I grew up on West Mission, which is just about a quarter-mile south. And my first home I bought was on Sandia, which is about 300 yards north of the site. I drove by those trees probably for, you know, the 44 years I've lived in the town. And they were planted most likely around 1940. Saw some aerials that, that show that they were fairly established in 1948. So I'm guessing, 40s, late 30s, probably. And they are pretty unique. They do match size and, and species of some trees that we have on Main Street. So I, I'd really like to see them relocated in a location that would benefit the city, especially, Main Street has a, a designation of, that those palm trees have a historic designation in the city, and love to be able to add it in a place where we have a gap. So I'm just throwing it out there, I don't know if that's a possibility or not. As for the project itself, like I said, I grew up, I grew up there. I, I was on Citron probably, ah, 2,000 times going to school. I went to, went to school at Rainey. Mr. Lambert, that lived just a couple, couple doors down on, on Citron, was a, a, a teacher of mine. And, and that area, I remember when they tore the trees out. I was very upset when they did, because I was probably about 12. It was never supposed to be a park. I know the old man that owned it did not want to sell it, because he was angry and wanted more money for it. And I think eventually he passed away, and his kids picked it up and sold it at a later date. I think those were always supposed to be houses. You could tell by the, how the streets are aligned. My personal opinion doesn't matter, because the state has a gun to our head. And I'm speaking to the, to residents. The, the governor actually said, three years ago, that HCD, he was actually going to fund and enforcement side of HCD, that's the, the Housing Community Development with the state, to go and watch city councils and watch Board of Supervisors meetings to enforce, to force the, the building of additional housing. And I all agree, it, it's, it's the same, the lots are the same. You're meeting the requirements that we put forward, and, and frankly, we don't have a leg to stand on to, to push back in any other ways. ADUs are allowed without the city, you know, affected. Normally, if it was a, if somebody had built an ADU, it wouldn't even come to us. It, it goes just directly and gets approved by staff. So my only questions are just finding ways to make the project a little bit better. I appreciate the fact that you've taken out one of the elevations that kind of clashes with that neighborhood. But you have, you know, a couple different housing, or different houses that were built in the 60s, houses that were built in the 70s, even, I think, with at least one that burned down sometime in the 80s and was replaced. But, so that was my only question, really, about the, the trees. If there's a possibility, I, I would rather not see them destroyed, because they are a unique benefit to the city. That's my only question, if that's possible.
We could work with Community Development. And if the city has a need for them, we could figure out a way to help support that cause and get them relocated, box them up for you guys, and if you guys have a specific need and a location for them.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
And councilmember speak. If that is something, because you are hearing this under review, you can actually add that as a condition of approval, that he works with Community Services.
Yes.
With our urban forestry division.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Ms. Cisias?
Thank you. I, I appreciate, I don't have questions for you, Mr. Burson, but I do have some for staff. I was one of the councilmembers at the last meeting who asked for this to be under review and to better understand what we could do, given the rules. And it seems like there isn't anything that we could do, because the things that are under discretionary review are all being met. Like, the development is meeting every, everything that is already allowed by the rules that are set. So I appreciate that time to better understand what this is, that it's, our discretionary review is not truly discretionary, because as a community, we set these rules in place and in order to treat all developments fairly and equally. And so long as those rules that are set by the city, by us, by all of us, are being followed, then those are the rules that we establish to play by. I agree with my colleagues that there's pressure. And not just pressure, there's actual state law being passed that is superseding what we can do as local agencies to review developments. So I, I appreciate that our mayor, who stepped out, you know, wisely shared his opinion with everyone tonight, that it's, it's not really a discretionary decision. It's, it's a, it's a thing that we, we're voting on, but we're not really voting on. And so I hope that the public, you know, understands that as a council, we sit and have to weigh the risks of, the risks that we put the entire city under if we don't follow the rules that we have communally set or that are being imposed by the state. I appreciate that councilmember speak has shared that this has always been a privately-owned land. And while there are always hopes that these vacant infill lands turn into beautiful, lush, green parks, that was never the intention of the privately-owned land. And that privately-owned land has the right to be developed under the rules that we set for our community. I also want to make sure that there's a clear understanding that the city is not a developer. And there's a lot of things that I wish we could do, but we can't actually build buildings. We can't build units for unhoused neighbors. It's not a thing we can do. We can work with partners to have housing built, but we ourselves are not developers. And I want to make sure that everyone knows that none of your council has had any campaign contribution by any developer listed in this item. So I just, I want to set the record straight, because we're doing a lot of learning tonight. And I want us to go into this decision, understanding exactly what we can and cannot do. So I, I will only say that, limited to what I can do, which in this case doesn't seem like much. What I do wish, however, is that this development becomes a place, becomes, these become units that are for sale. Because the perpetuation of rental properties is only making it more and more difficult for, for, for families to create generational wealth and to get ahead. And so I understand that you cannot make that happen, Mr. Bergeron, or Bergeron, whomever it is that you're working with. I truly hope that you can make these homes for sale so that the residents are invested in their community. Not that renters are not. Renters are. But it is difficult right now. And I'll speak from experience to break into the housing market, and it's not for lack of trying. We need more, we need more homes for, for sale, and not a perpetual rental class. So, thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I'll have a few questions for you, but I was hoping Joanne could maybe clarify the, the state's encouragement versus telling us what we're going to do.
So it's, I agree, it's not encouragement. It's really a dictation. It's, it's telling us, based on the legislation, the way it's been written. This is how local agencies need to proceed. You've heard this many times, as we went through our housing element. And most of you have, all of you have already approved by right development standards. So when we actually get affordable housing, it will not be discretionary, because of the fact that that is the way the law is written now. So we have developed standards. So when we look at these projects, we know exactly what we're looking at, and we're able to at least adhere to the standards we have adopted. So no, it is something that has definitely been forced on all local agencies. It's a topic of conversation amongst many planning directors and city managers about how our local control has been taken away. But we are here to represent the law, as much as we may not like it, and to present to you what the law is. And sometimes, it's not always a decision we all agree upon, but it's what we are in a position to do, and that's what we're following through with.
So there's not a damn thing we can do? So there's not a damn thing we can do?
Well, I think whatever you do, you just need to be worried about the consequences of what that is.
Right, and I think we know what that is. Would you consider not making them rentals to make our community happier with a shitty deal that's coming down at us?
That cannot be an option.
So you've made your decision. So you've made your decision that they're all going to be rentals?
There's no law that requires us to.
I'm asking you as just a person to a person.
No.
So you've already determined they're all going to be rentals?
No, I have not.
So would you consider not making them all rentals?
I will not.
So you won't even consider it?
No.
Well, then you've already made your decision that they're all rentals.
Yeah.
Oh, well, you should have said that the first time I asked you, not the three times. Okay, so I know how the rest is probably going to go since you just blew smoke up my ass. So foremost, will be the landlord.
Foremost will be the owner of the property, and we will contract with a general contractor to build the houses.
Okay. So that alone, in a normal state, I would have said, of course I wouldn't vote for this. It's ridiculous. Of course it doesn't meet the standards of the surrounding community. But I don't have a choice. I just want to confirm that the 265-foot square foot single car garage is for the ADU and not a third ADU?
That is correct.
Okay. What's that? Can we do that as a condition of approval to make sure?
Maybe the story will change, but.
Can we do that as a condition of approval to make sure it doesn't turn into a third ADU?
So here's what the law, here's what our law says on the ADU. The law says you can have two ADUs per single family residence, but you have to meet the combination requirement. So you can have one detached ADU and one attached ADU or one junior ADU, which is inside the building. You cannot have two detached ADUs on the same property. So that is the, that is what you need to look at. So if somebody were to do an ADU inside their existing single family home, and you have a detached ADU, that would be allowed, but you cannot have two detached ADUs. And that's the way our ordinance is written.
Okay, thank you.
So the site plan says, it's labeled garage ADU. So we cannot prevent that garage from being a third dwelling unit?
If it's detached, we can, because they already have a detached ADU.
But if it's attached?
Then you can do two ADUs per single family residence if one is attached and one is detached, or you can have two attached.
So I don't know if I'm just not asking it right. So the garage is attached on all of these, in the site plan, right?
So the single family has the third car attached, and all of the two stories have them detached.
So all the single fam, all the single-story ones, those attached ADUs can be a third ADU, can be a third dwelling unit on that property?
Yes.
Yes.
If it were to ever be converted. But right now, the plan shows it as a garage for the detached ADU.
I understand. So I'm going to repeat it one more time, so that I get it and so that it's being, so all of the two-story homes that have a detached garage, those detached garages cannot become a third dwelling unit.
That's correct.
But all of the single-story homes, or all of the homes that have the attached garage, those attached garages can become a third dwelling unit.
Yes.
But then they wouldn't have a garage to park their car in, I guess, right?
Sure.
Yeah. All right.
State of California says that you don't need any parking.
Yeah, I know, I know. Okay, I had, there's a few questions from some residents that I had over the last few days. One was whether the setbacks could be adjusted a little bit to reflect the neighborhood, the surrounding neighborhood. And I'm assuming they can't, Joanne, because of the ADUs?
So we looked at the front yard setbacks, and the front yard setbacks do reflect the rest of the neighborhood. And then the houses themselves have the five-foot and the 10-foot setback on the side yards. It's the ADU that has a five-foot setback to the property.
Okay. All right. And then I'm assuming you wouldn't consider building all one-story homes?
No, we're complying with your design guidelines.
In regards to the cluster mailboxes, Joanne, did the postmaster make that decision where to put these mailboxes?
I do not know that, and that is, that is a decision by them. We don't get involved in that. So there are options they can pursue.
So if we wanted to move the, ask the developer to move the cluster mailboxes maybe more to the interior of the project instead of being out where they're going to get broken into probably regularly? Can we, can we ask that, or is it all postal service stuff we just have to pretty much keep our hands off?
Yeah, and I would ask the applicant, how do you normally work with the postal service?
We submit a site plan to the postal service and they dictate the location. We just show them as potential locations on the site plan.
Okay. So they're just potential locations?
Correct.
So?
Postmaster has final say of location.
So would you maybe present to the postmaster one of two things? One being, could the residents have their own mailbox so they can monitor it better?
They don't do that any longer.
They don't do that? And, okay, then the other one would be, would you consider moving those maybe off of the main drag to where they might not have as many eyes on them?
So the process is, we submit a site plan, we don't even show them the locations of the mailbox, we give them a site plan with addresses, and they come back and show us the location based on their mail routes.
Okay. And then, I think, Joanne, I saw the traffic study was done in 2019?
So there was no traffic study. So the way it works, and what we've explained, if you have a project that generates less than 50 peak hour trips, you don't have to do a traffic impact assessment, they just have to do a traffic memo. And that is what was accepted by our transportation department, given the, that the peak hour trips are only 14 trips in the AM and 19 trips in the PM.
Okay, but even if, even if that isn't true, for whatever reason, what would trigger, how much more traffic would trigger the potential to say no to this project? I mean, is it, I think in the staff report it said that you have to have 13,000 trips a day, is that what I read?
No, so the 13,000 average daily trips per day is the capacity that Citron and Taylor Avenue can hold. That's the capacity of your collector's street. The project itself is not going to generate that many trips. The project itself is generating an average of 179 average daily trips. And then what they look at is what is broken down into the AM peak hour and the PM peak hour. Because not all of the traffic is happening at one time, it's dispersed.
Got it. Any of my colleagues have any more questions for the developer?
I just wanted to just give you some professional advice. I've been on your side of the table there. If you know the answer, don't lie. It's not good, it'll stick with you. Because the next time I see you, and I may see you somewhere else, it's not a good look. Just from a professional standpoint, I get that your bosses are telling you they don't want you to disclose it's going to be a rental. If you know it, say it.
Sir, there's no lie. Respectfully, there's no lie.
Okay, but I think that the vice mayor asked you if you could, if you could consider it, and you said no. And then he asked why, and then he said, well, is it going to be a rental? And you said yes. So before, you said no, and then you said yes.
No, I said I need to keep it open for a rental.
But then you said you, you're not going to even offer it up as an option?
It is already an option for a for sale and a rental. We need an investor to invest it either way. I don't know, I can't sit here and tell you what it's going to be.
Okay.
Or discount it, discount it.
Fine.
Okay, you can sit down now. So in my six years on council, I've asked developers several times, would you consider making this tweak to make the community happier? We're not necessarily thrilled about this project, but would you at least do this and this and this to make it a better project that's something we can stomach? There hasn't been one developer that has said no. They've wanted to work with the city, they wanted to have a good reputation within the city, they wanted the residents to be happy. I would say that this developer doesn't. And I also will say that you're going to see a lot more of this because of the state laws. And I think this is actually the second time we've had a developer come in and puff his chest out and tell us how it's going to be because he can. They know they can. They know we can't do anything about this. That's the truth, you guys. I think we're all with you, and we're all screwed. So I'm sorry. There's nothing else? Do I have a motion? We don't have a choice.
I'll move it out of protest, just to get us out of here.
You know, Vice Mayor, can I actually say something? I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
You know, just to touch on what you said, you know, developers do get a bad rap a lot of times, but developers come in and they want to be good neighbors. And I think that that goes a real, real long way. And so begrudgingly, the choice that we have to make is move this garbage along or face repercussions from the state.
Which they would come and approve it anyway.
Which, at the end of the day, we either spend a bunch of money defending this in court and lose because the state is on their side. That's the choice that we have to make.
Okay, we have a mover, Mr. Speak, and I second it. Sorry, guys.
I know, right?
Oh, you want to get the mayor?
Yeah.
He might have gone home.
Yeah.
You wake up?
Fun aside, I hope everybody enjoyed Steiner. He is my mom's favorite council member. She just loved me.
If he doesn't live over by there, I wouldn't be anymore.
Up next, regional meeting report. Update from Councilmember Wes Speak on the Riverside County Transportation Commission, RCTC. It's all you, Wes.
Thank you, I'll be quick. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We did a review of our fiscal policy. We did some admin changes to our policy, nothing exciting. However, we did give Union Pacific $600,000 to start on their process of looking at potential station locations and what their impacts would be for the CB Rail project that goes from Los Angeles to Coachella. We got a ledge update on a couple of items. One was AB 1957, which is a pilot program to do best value selection instead of the lowest bid. And apparently the, the RCTC is supporting that, even though I am not. And then AB 2535, under Assemblymember Bonta, is basically proposing to oppose, oppose any spending on roads that don't have a substantial zero emission and would mandate that the CTC would vote no. Which means we would get no roads, and more additional no roads. Unfortunately, I think that we are opposing that, and it looks like I think it failed today, or yesterday. And that would, that would be really bad. It would prevent basically any, any stage of funding for projects, which means you wouldn't even be able to start a project, much less apply for, for funding for one. And that's it.
Thank you, Wes. I'm going to back up a little bit. Administrative reports, there are none. Legislative matters, there are none. Boards and commission reports from the library, there is none. We just heard RCTC. City attorneys reports and comments, Mr. Durlin? He abstains. The great illustrious city manager, did you want to recuse yourself, or did you want to say something?
No recusals and no comments. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, you're no fun. City council member reports and comments, Tony? Tony's done. Wes?
I just had one, Mr. Mayor, one, I just wanted to, for us to, to end our meeting in.
I was going to turn it over for you.
Okay, good, that's it. Good, thank you.
Okay. Jackie? Jackie's done, Jim's done. The only comment I have is, is I was recused, but I did watch, and I'm proud of all four of my fellow city members, council members. You all rock. For a German, I'd like to turn it over to Wes, and he will close out the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to close our meeting in honor of Francis Zouine. He is the father of Frank Swain. I think you heard him a couple of times here today. Mr. Zouine actually was born in 1911, and he passed away in January, which made him at 113, the oldest living man in the world for about six months. He, well-loved, spent a lot of time here in Corona with Frank and his family. They took excellent care of him. Any person that could live to 113 is pretty amazing. The fact that he was born in the Ottoman Empire, even before Lebanon was even a place, which is absolutely amazing to me. And Frank said he was sharp as a tack up until the very end. So I wanted to close our meeting tonight in memory of Mr. Zouine.
All right, we're adjourned.